Hey Communications, it's just Sean here. I'm not sure if it's John or not on the other end, just doing a sound check, please.
Yep, it's me on the other end here, Sean.
Beautiful. Okay, thanks, John. Appreciate it. Loud and clear.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, Mayor, it's Cheryl from the chambers. Could we do a quick sound check?
Hi, Mayor, it's Cheryl in the chambers. Can we do a quick sound check, please? Hi, Counselor Jolly, it's Cheryl. Can we do a quick sound check, please?
Hey, Cheryl.
Thank you.
It wasn't just me that couldn't hear the mayor, right?
Can you guys hear me now?
Got you now.
Okay, perfect. Using a different headsets for my ears and some other mic, whatever, we're good. Has everyone else done a sound check? Did you guys hear all the background noise here?
Counselor Mackay was asking the same thing. His voice covered it, but yours is not picking up too much of it. Primarily your voice. Yeah.
It's very, very frustrating that this hotel has nowhere we can sit and do this meeting.
No private room.
Cafeteria. Yeah. They wouldn't let us do late check, so it's just a little bit, I'm a little mad.
Yeah.
Well, we'll make it work, right?
Always do.
Hi, Trevor, it's Cheryl from the chambers. Could you please do a quick sound check?
Check.
Thank you. Danielle, can we do a quick sound check, please?
You betcha.
Thank you.
I might need to change my background. Still looking a little green.
You can be our good luck counselor today.
Yeah, so. Lucky we are.
Hi, Craig, it's Cheryl in the chambers. Could I ask you to do a quick sound check, please?
Can you hear me?
Perfect, thanks.
Yeah. Can someone ask Councilor Maskey to log into the Zoom?
Yes, Mayor, she's just logging in now.
Oh, perfect, thank you. And then can we have cameras on so I can see everybody? At least maybe just counsel and Bill. It's two Bills.
I assume you mean the other Bill.
Bill Marsh and Bill Fletcher. We go two-minute countdown? Well, don't see Councilor Maskey show line yet.
I believe she's in person, Mayor.
I want everybody in person on Zoom.
Oh, sorry, I understand.
Yeah. Going back to the old pandemic days. Many meetings that we have on Zoom. All right, I've got one o'clock and I see everyone here, so I'll call the meeting to order. I apologize if the background noise in my situation isn't great, but I'll do my best. The attendance at the start of the meeting is 100%, with, I think, all the boys and Councilor Maskey in chambers, except for Counselor Mackay's on Zoom, but it is 100%. Few changes to the agenda today. We have we have moved the Founder's Day proclamation to February 6. And a lot of this, well, first of all, the Founder's Day proclamation, there just wasn't ready. But a lot of this, I'll just start off with, is the fact that Ken and I are out of town. And we are going to be racing to get to a flight later today, and there's a transit strike in the area. So there's a lot of cars on the street and we're worried about traffic. So I'm gonna modify the agenda a little bit, just to keep it short, and also asking that we keep our debate and our questions and our comments to relevance and, you know, constructive. And keep it to a minimum, but changes to the agenda are going to be removing a Founder's Day proclamation. We have also added, oh no, we actually pulled off consent from Union Park, but we're adding one emergent item called, I will be under 10, it'll be a letter of support for air utilities. I thought it'd be for time savings if we take off the civic and external agencies, like our updates, and we can do that next week. I'm sure you guys are happy to hear that. And was that the only amendments I made, guys? I believe so. Okay, so with the, oh, sorry, did I make one more?
It was 11, item 11, civic and external agencies.
Yeah, we took that off, yeah. So can I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended? Counselor Kill, go ahead.
January 23, 2024 agenda be adopt, or, yeah, adopted as amended.
Okay, perfect. And because we're doing this so much like Zoom, if you go to your reaction buttons at the bottom of your screen, there is a green checkmark and a red X. So we'll use that for voting for today, just so it's consistent, and that way we can see everybody's vote, so vote now.
I'm really gonna be green today, so.
Yeah, you are. As long as you keep saying yes to all the motions. Did you figure it out? Counselor Kill, can Counselor Broadhead? This is our first test of the day. Just waiting for your votes, Mike and Wes. There we go. And Mike, you figured it out?
I typed it in, yes.
No, go to your reactions at the very bottom of your screen, and there's a little green checkmark, so you can see on all our faces, there's green checkmarks. Do you see it? Oh. Well, we'll take you as a yes for now, and I'll be unanimous, and maybe I can get Sean to run up and help you figure that out. We'll move on to the next one, and I think you all have to also unclick your check when you're done. The next thing on the agenda is, we have one registered speaker, but it's for the public hearing. So we'll get to consent agenda now. But could I have someone read that in? Counselor Jolly, are you good with that?
Sure. Cheryl, are you able to pop that into the chat? That the recommendations in the following agenda reports be approved, 6.1 regular That the recommendations in the following agenda reports be approved, 6.1 regular council meeting minutes of December 19, 2023, and special counsel strategic planning meeting minutes of January 15 and 16, 2024, 8.1 poet laureate policy update, and 9.2 bylaw for 2024 amendment to master rates bylaw 182, first, second, and third readings.
All right. I'll call for the vote. Councilor Maskey, just waiting for your vote. There we go. All right, that's unanimous. Now everyone go into there and unclick your check marks, they disappear. Uh, we are now moving on to approve the minutes on consent. And where in the public hearing will be at 2 o'clock, sorry, 3 o'clock your time, so that's, we'll come back to that. Somebody remind me if I keep, if I go over. Uh, the poet laureate was approved on consent. So now we already go to the Environmental Advisory Committee annual report. And we have Bill Marsh online with us to present it, so I will call Bill up now.
Yeah.
Hi there.
Hi, Bill, how are you?
Doing good.
Okay, just hold, before you go, Councilor Maskey. If you go onto your reaction button, you still see the green checkmark on your name, just unclick it. Thank you. Go ahead, Bill.
Okay, I am going to steal the screen here. I just gotta make sure I grab the right ones, I work on three screens.
Well, that's a beautiful picture.
Yeah, it's a random backdrop that comes up my computer every day. It's a, it's something.
There's a tool somewhere in the South Pacific somewhere.
It's what the Microsoft does with their Windows. Guys, everyone sees everything?
We did, yeah.
Okay, I just gotta adjust the windows here, so I can see some of my text here. Uh, so complicated. Okay. Um, good afternoon. As you all know, my name is Bill Marsh, and I am the Chair of the 2023 Environmental Advisory Committee. Uh, thank you to Mayor Herron and Council for the opportunity to present the EAC 2023 Annual Report and 2024 Priorities. Okay, as a review, the EAC bylaw describes three distinct functions performed by the EAC to meet its goals. Number one is to receive information and updates for administration. New information or updates provided to the AC that are deemed necessary, including topics that EAC will later be expected to provide input or advice on. Number two, to provide input to administration, which is provide informal comments on environmental projects or issues identified by administration. And item three is to provide advice to council, which are written advice typically identified as priorities by council and/or aligned with the environmental long-range plans. The EAC had three priority areas in 2023. The first one is reoccurring priorities include the environmental initiatives grant application and community recognition program nomination review and recommendations. Second priority was provide advice on the update and review of the sustainable building policy in the water conservation bylaw. And the third was to provide advice on the development of the urban biodiversity pilot education program that includes native pollinators, coyotes, and other wildlife. We received and reviewed eight environmental initiative grant application, uh, program applications, and we recommended seven applications to receive grant up, grant funding last year. Um, we received two nominations for the environmental stewardship category of the community recognition program, which was recommended to be approved as one collective nomination for approval by city council, as the nominations were from the same organization. Um, EAC supported and provided feedback for the development of the native pollinator monitoring and education program pilot. And finally, EAC provided feedback on the proposed changes to the water conservation bylaw, and I presented the updated bylaw to council for approval. Other input. Uh, we reviewed the environmental sustainable policy and minor updates to policy were recommended. Um, also, EAC provide input on the proposed changes to the sustainable building policy in 2023. City staff will complete an internal staff review and return to EAC with the final review of the changes in 2024. The EAC received updates on a number of items, um, the city's waste and diversion programs. City staff attended the meeting from the Waste Management Branch. Review of the final 2022 environmental report card. And staff from Racket Parks provide presentation on the citywide grant and on the impacts to the environmental initiatives grant program. Um, reviewed the detailed 2023 environmental communications plan. And lastly, EAC was provide updates on the energy efficiency programs, including SEEP and HEEG, which I took abundant, uh, pleasure in using those programs this last year. Um, other updates, uh, in June 2023, the EAC went on an environmental projects tour. Um, the community visited the Pollinator Garden and natural forested areas at Coal Mine Park. Community member and master gardener Dale Ford provided an overview of the environmental impacts and pollinator enhancements of this project. The second location was a St. Albert compost depot, where the community got to see the new addition of the diseased branch pile and how public operations staff maintains the depot. And to conclude the tour, Melissa Logan, environmental coordinator of the Sturgeon River Natural Areas, provided an overview of the constructed wetlands on Villanova Road, highlighting the historical significance and value of the site. We had so much fun, we forgot to take pictures of this tour. So the pictures here are from our annual team building cleanup. Okay, now for the 2024 priorities. Um, the proposed 2024 EAC priorities include the reoccurring review and approval of the environmental initiatives grant applications and community recognition program, environmental stewardship nominee nomination review and recommendations. Second, the final review and approval of the sustainable building policy updates and review and provide advice on environmental management of contaminated sites policy and the idle free bylaw. And lastly, a key priority to provide advice on the development of the climate adaptation implementation strategy. The EAC greatly appreciates the support provided by city administration in the completion of the EAC's 2024 work plan and priorities. The EAC was always provided comprehensive background information before discussing key issues and making recommendations to council. And I'd like to thank the committee members and counselors, Kilik and Ber Maskey, um, that were part of our committee. And that would be it.
Awesome. We, Bill, uh, open it up. Questions? First, I'm glad you had so much fun on that tour. Might be something that maybe even the rest of council will want to join in on one time, just for their own knowledge, but that's good. And, uh, just a question for me, you know, how was your experience with the application process for C N?
Um, it was pretty good. Uh, my, the biggest challenge was actually, uh, dealing with, um, the municipal association. There was a lot of back and forth there. So the application side was easy, but it was dealing with them because there's, it's really need to know a lot of technical information, especially if you want to install like me.
All right, uh, Council, if you have any questions, I'll get you to just sort of raise your hand on the screen so I can see you. All right, I don't see any questions, so I also don't see everyone who asked me. There we go. Councilor Killig, are you the main rep on EAC?
Uh, not anymore, no.
Oh, is it Councilor Maskey?
Yes.
Okay, I'll go to you, uh, Shelley, to make the motion.
That the Environmental Advisory Committee annual report for 2023 provided as attached to the January 23, 24 agenda report entitled Environmental Advisory Committee 2023 Annual Report be received as information, and that the Environmental Advisory Committee's proposed 2024 priorities as set out in the committee's 2023 annual report be approved.
Awesome. I will, uh, turn it over to you for some opening comments.
Uh, the only comment is, I mean, this committee does wonderful work there, um, you know, and especially, uh, Mr. Chair here, he's excellent. Um, um, we're just, I'm, we're very, very privileged in St. Albert to have this group working and volunteering for us. So they're, they're well-knowledge and, and a great group. So I just want to send out a thank you, and I'm sure Councilor Kilik, uh, would feel the same, so thank you.
You know what else indicating they want to speak, but I'll just add, um, that I'm really looking forward to the 24, um, parties, the climate initiatives. To see what you guys, um, what the conversation looks like, or what you guys can make of it. But without our call for the vote. That looks like it passes unanimously. Thank you for joining us, Mr. Marsh.
Thank you, and safe flights for those that are traveling today.
Thanks so much.
All right.
Okay, uh, we are into bylaws, which is 9.1 Millennium Park borrowing bylaw. Uh, I had added it to consent mostly because I was just looking for time savings, but, uh, Councilor Hughes has pulled it off just for voting purposes, so I will get, uh, Council Broadhead to maybe read the motions in, and then we'll just go to the vote.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I moved that the updated, uh, project charter, uh, DARP 005 Millennium Park Development attached to the agenda report entitled Bylaw 3/2024 Millennium Park Borrowing Bylaw. First reading dated January 23, 2024 be approved. And secondly, that Bylaw 3/2024 Millennium Park Borrowing Bylaw be read a first time.
Sorry, I was muted. Any comments, Council Broadhead?
Voting purposes only, Madam Mayor.
Okay, we're good, yeah. All right, I'll just, uh, before we go to the vote, I'll just, you know, let the public know that this is now going to be advertised. There's opportunities for petitions against the borrowing bylaw, um, and second and third reading are scheduled to come back to council in, I think it's April 2nd, with the agenda. All right, to call for the vote. So I've got, uh, the passes with Councilor Maskey and Councilor Hughes opposed. Okay, so we'll see how that goes. And the master rates bylaw was approved on consent, which was just some adjustments made for an SFB. And we are actually on to the emergent item. Uh, I'll tell you, I'll tell everybody a little bit about, and then I'm actually gonna turn it over to Councilor Mackay as, um, I don't know if you're gonna be speaking as a counselor or the chair of the commission, Ken, but, uh, obviously, everyone on council knows that there was an increase in the rates, uh, just budget season for various reasons, which I'm gonna let Councilor Mackay, um, speak to, but some of it was plant upgrades that, uh, even without new industrial development in the region, we could not support. So that's just even toilet flushing, it was, um, planned for years in advance, uh, with probably not enough reserves in the bank. And then the other reason we wanted to have this conversation today is, um, the upgrades to the plant require a fair amount of cash, and we are looking towards the province to get some help on that. And the provincial support, we're hoping is gonna come due to their interest in hydrogen and the Dow plant in Fort Saskatchewan, both of which require these plant upgrades. Um, last week, the city, or sorry, the county of Le Duke, um, had asked, uh, all the city managers to give input on council's position on some of this, uh, rate increases and the, and the plant upgrades. And instead of St. Albert staying silent, it was a very political question, I didn't think that Mr. Fletcher should have to answer that. Um, but instead of us staying silent, I thought it would be a good idea for city of Seattle to actually throw their support behind Arrow and really try to push the provincial government to, um, provide this grant fundings. So it would be just a simple letter of writing support of their, uh, asked for, and I can't remember the dollars, so I'm gonna actually turn it over to Kim to finish this off.
Yeah, thanks, Madam Mayor, and actually you've done a very good job capturing kind of the initial issues. I mean, you are correct. Uh, we were always looking at, uh, planning for a plant expansion, uh, targeting about the year 2028. We would have taken that into just a normal, uh, build process, where we would do the regular design, put the, uh, build out the tender, and then also be out there system grounds. The, uh, it was massive industrial growth in our, and just regular growth in our, all of our communities, as you remember this. The, uh, uh, former Capital Region wastewater admission, now known as air utilities, couple of street teams, thousands, they were 400,000 residents. And, uh, what we're seeing is, uh, a massive increase in not only residential waste, but also, um, industrial waste, and by industrial waste, I'm, I'm talking really, really heavy industrial, Kathy, can you put yours on the internet, please? Um, and, uh, and so, um, what we have done is, uh, we've been forced to move ahead of our time schedules in order to meet, uh, not only the growth, but also take advantage of an opportunity that we have with our products, just to remind everybody, we actually are going to be providing them with water reuse from our wastewater plant, and that's going to actually be, uh, a positive benefit for, uh, all of our communities, because we will actually, uh, use, uh, that, uh, income or revenue to stabilize any further rate increases. Uh, however, because we feel that this should not be on the backs of this industrial growth, particularly some of the growth we're seeing though, Tyson, and there was a Dow Chemical announcement, a polyethylene extractor, that, uh, uh, that the government and industry are all here responsible. We have no ability as a non-profit mission to, uh, have growth, pay for growth, we have no opportunity to actually access any specific type of grants, and we obviously don't take advantage of OSLS, because we don't have bylaws for OSLS that we quite demonstrate and manage. So we approached the, uh, provincial government for assistance, we were asking for $50 million, and, uh, so far, we are receiving a lot of very positive, um, indications that, uh, they are working hard to meet that request. So, um, what we're looking at now is just a letter of support from all the different municipalities involved, just to say, uh, yes, as a commission member, utilizing wastewater services in our region, uh, we support the request. Uh, it's just, uh, it's not a must-have, uh, but we figured that with some of the uh, information coming out from the county and all our people, it just, just be a benefit and just be one more, uh, uh, support for the government to rely on when they're making their decision. I can answer any questions, if anybody has any.
I, I guess a question would be, what, what happens if we don't get the $50 million from the, uh, provincial government? Does that come back on to ratepayers?
Yes, I mean, as I said, mentioned, they would have to call down on ratepayers, um, and, uh, and, but, I mean, again, uh, you know, that's kind of the purpose of our argument, that this shouldn't fall back on the right pair, because, uh, of our support into the, uh, industry. And, and also from the provincial initiatives that are ongoing in industrial land to attract more hydrogen, more, uh, heavy, uh, industry. So, yes, a short answer is correct, they would fall back on ratepayers, and we wouldn't be able to, uh, stabilize our rates for a couple of years until we started to receive the revenue from the Air Products.
And, and, um, is $50 million going to to be enough? Because when I looked in the background or some numbers were going from, you know, 20 billion up to 160 billion, but, yeah, is 50 million the right number?
Uh, 50 million is what we've been working with, with our, uh, with our consultants and also with some of our design leaders. The plant is now, uh, uh, almost 80% designed, and, uh, and we're, we're, we're pretty confident in our numbers now, around 1 to 66, uh, million. Um, we have asked the province that, uh, that if they so feel inclined that they could take on a bigger piece. Uh, and, uh, again, as I mentioned in my comments, there's really no funding model right now, we don't apply, they, we don't have a threat package that we can apply for. We've looked at federal grounds, we've looked at Canada infrastructure, we've looked at, uh, working with the industry. For example, Air Products is funding all of the, uh, pipeline from the plant down to our plant, they're doing all of the infrastructure that's required for their, uh, water reuse needs on our. So, uh, where we just pay for it, but we just have no other, you know, that kind of. So where we just pay for it, but we just have no other mechanism available to us as a not.
Thank you. Thanks, Mike. And Mike, can you input your voting check marks so I don't get confused with?
Unless you want to vote for it.
Counsel Broadhead has a question.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So my understanding is that the the increased capacity at the water station was inevitable at any case.
Right.
Can you just confirm that, or is this requirement as a result of, you know, quite honestly, the industrial expansion in the heartland?
Yeah, as I mentioned in some of my comments, we've been planning this since as early as two thousand and twelve. But as of November, I mean, earlier about when we got our new C O, one of the first challenges she looked at was some of our our just the massive growth that we were seeing in the not only industrial heartland, but in all of our other municipalities. And we were already exceeding, so we can handle eighty-five megaliters in a normal kind of flow. That's what the plant can go up to a hundred and five, combined with the fact that our plant is forty years old, and we were starting to face a lot of RMR issues. That was eating up our reserve unless Mayor Heron said, you know, we have subsequently learned that we obviously didn't have a proper reserve policy. And we weren't prepared to be to move this quickly. Anyway, so the the challenge was is we were already seeing that we were exceeding our capacity. And now that we have started to move forward on the plant expansion, we already, and it's a little bit with fortune because the new Dow announcement that just came in just earlier last late last year, that's going to give us ten megaliters more. And combined with what we see now coming out of Air Products and potentially this new Hydro in Canada that's in Stratton County, we're going to actually, we're already going to be over half of of our new fourth digester. So the other thing that we're running into, and it's just our licensing. So we, the the environment department has a ten-year license as to what can go into the river from a wastewater treatment plant. We that license has already been deferred once. We are coming up to a renewal at the end of twenty twenty-four. We anticipate that obviously, which is what's happening already in wastewater treatment plants in southern Alberta, we will be held to a much stricter license agreement with the provincial government as to what we put back in the river. So it's actually very fortuitous that we actually have moved to a new technology at the same time because we would have been forced to do that with our with the with this new license agreement with the province. We would have been, we just wouldn't have been able to meet the meet the necessary requirements under legislation using kind of our current processes. We would have to supplement them with this new process anyway. So in a way, you know, it's it's really unfortunate that we had to go this fast, but in another ways, good fortune that we have kind of moved forward. And and I I believe, I strongly believe that the provincial government is right.
Yeah, so just to follow up. Yeah, I'm hoping the provincial government comes to the table with with some support here. Despite the fight between the province and the feds, have the feds indicated any desire to participate in offsetting the cost tiers?
Just like the provincial government, the federal government does not have kind of a grant or package, any of the federal grants that we would potentially qualify. We're looking in, you know, million dollar range, things like that. And the other thing that we have is because we're a non-profit commission, in some grants, we have to actually get the municipality to apply on our behalf. So if you, as a municipality, have a list of nice projects that you want to be funded by either the federal government or the provincial government, are you going to put those at risk to fund commission? And so that's one of the challenges we're facing as well. So but going to Ottawa and talking to the federal ministers, I we were in Christopher Freeland's office. They are trying, work hard, but they are closest thing that they could refer us back to was something they did around when they were mothballing all the coal plants. They came in with some additional funding for those municipalities impacted by them shutting down coal production. So is potential that something could be coming in the future, but it could be years.
Fair enough. Well, I I guess if I phone my M P, I'll know what to say to him. Thanks.
I I've spoken with our M P, and he's very supportive and very concerned about the impact on ratepayers as well.
Very good. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. One thing also I'll add is many of you know, I sat on the commission before Ken selected so from thirteen to seventeen. That that board was aware that we didn't have enough in reserves, and we were pushing the previous C E O to to build up reserves by increasing rates, and he was hesitant to do so. And for years, those of us sending our sewage to the commission were at quite low rates, and that is now bit us in the in the butt by not planning ahead. So for years, we were below up for an hour. We're going to have to be slightly above that core rates until we catch up on this. But I agree with some of the comments that we need the provincial government to step up on this. So if this is supported, I'll write a good letter. Look at Bill to help me write a good letter. I see no more hands up. So do we actually have a motion for this one? Because it was kind of emergent. Oh, there you go. Ken, it's in the chat. Do you want to read that?
Thank you. I see it. Thank you, Madam Mayor. That Mayor Heron provided a letter of support to area until these were the requests to the provincial government for fifty million dollars of grant funding.
Right. I think you probably said it all during your conversations, but do you have anything else to add?
No, I just appreciate council's willingness to be able to put this on today's agenda, short notice.
Okay, seeing no hands up. Call for the vote. That appears to be unanimous. Awesome. I will remember to unclick my vote now too. Okay, so we're moving on. Council, so the updates have been moved to February sixth. So we're into council motions. Twelve point one is Counselor Hughes's motion. Counselor Hughes, given the background, are you still reading this in? So it was deemed unactionable.
Yeah, so I had a couple of questions because I did have an alternative motion, and I just wanted to figure out if it's necessary or not. So can I just? Okay, great. Okay, so Mr. Fletcher, so when I look at, I'd rep you to your staff, but it said it was unactionable, but at the same time, it also said that I guess here's what I'm asking. In the current status, can the same organization apply for more than one community event grant for different events in the same calendar year? Because it looked like it's under a different, what do they call it, a different administrative directive, but it's still limiting the ability for an organization to apply for more than one grant in the same calendar year. Is that the case?
Yeah, thank you, Counselor. In in short, effectively, that is the case, but I'll ask Danielle Podlobney to provide any additional comment.
Thanks, Mr. Fletcher. Through the chair to Counsel Hughes, you are correct. In the current state of the program, you can only apply for one grant per year per association.
Okay, because I'm looking at, for example, if the Kinsmen wanted to do the both the rodeo and also the snowflake festival, they would not be allowed to apply for double grants right now for two totally very different events, right?
You are correct.
Okay, so I'd like to put forward the alternate motion then that's recommended, that the C E O be directed to amend the community events grant program guidelines to permit the approval of multiple grant requests annually from a single organization.
All right, is there any more questions on this before I actually accept that? I see no hands up. So I'll accept your motion, Counsel Hughes. Go ahead.
Okay, so because it's because of the way this this organization of the grant program has changed, this is what the motion needs to be to allow this. The main onus behind this is just really that we became aware that the Kinsman Club may be willing to do more than one community event to help us out, help the community out, be able to the snowflake festival, also do the rodeo. I don't want them to have to pick a favorite at the expense of the community. So this is about if there's organizations that are willing to put on quality events and are and they're totally different events, I don't see the benefit to limiting the ability to give the grants to allow those events to occur. And so I I didn't want to wait on this and have it for later on for for the discussions. I want, if there's an opportunity for the Kinsman Club to take over the snowflake festival and they're willing to do it, I don't want the limitation for them to do it be because of a policy that doesn't need to occur in this way. I don't think that most organizations want to apply for more than one grant program for a more than one community event a year. But certainly, if there's an opportunity to increase the number of community events, I don't want to have this be a limitation on this. Some organizations are really good at it, and we should be celebrating them, taking advantage of that situation. So that's intention behind this. Thank you.
Right, Counsel Jolly.
Thank you. So I absolutely hate motions that kind of delve into administrative matters, but I'm supporting this motion because, you know, it would have been really nice if administration just come back and been like, you know what? We can make this work for this year. It's it's really unfortunate that we're having to make this motion, but it is what it is. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, Counsel Broadhead.
Yeah, couldn't have said it better, Counsel Jolly, and thanks for the motion. Only to make this happen. I I like the wording because it says, just because they're allowed, they're allowed to to submit a grant request, but it'll still be up to the to the grant reviewing party to either to grant the approve the request or not. So but given that this allows for grants to support different projects, I think this is wise. Thank you.
Great. You know, no hands up. May I need to go to Counsel Hughes?
No, I'll leave that. Sorry.
Yeah, no, if I could, Madam Mayor, just to.
I didn't see your hand up, sorry.
Yeah, that that my apologies, but just just to say, you know, living this with the the Kinsmen essentially looking to to take over a an event, the Snowflake Festival, as well as their rodeo parade. They're they're a great organization, and they're stepping up to to not not, you know, run the events, but to run them for the the benefit of our residents. So if we keep that in mind, I think this is a really good motion. And as I said, after a a real life situation of where this is happening, this to me makes a perfect sense. And as as Counselor Broadhead correctly stated, it's still up to the committees to ultimately approve. So I think we have the safeguards in place to to make this very workable.
All right, I think everybody said it. Counsel Hughes is going to call for the vote.
Go for the vote.
All right, call for the vote. That passes unanimously. Yes, okay, so unload now. Okay, we are on to twelve. We've got twenty minutes for the public hearing, so let's go to Counsel Kilik's motion on fire hall four. I'll get you read it in, Counsel Kilik.
One moment.
It's in the chat, Counsel Kilik.
Yep, I think I've got it here. That the budget for Project Charter Fire zero zero five be increased from sixteen million, three hundred and forty-one thousand dollars to nineteen million, three hundred and forty-one thousand to be funded from the Borrowing Bylaw twenty-two slash twenty twenty-one. That administration use additional funding to build fire hall number four using a conventional construction methodology, and that this notice of motion be, well, there we are, debated January twenty-third.
Okay, I've got some hands up. So Counsel Hughes will go to you.
Thank you. So administration, so what how much would we borrow on the first pouring by law? And forgive me if it was already in there. I just missed it. How much we already have on our line of credit for this little guy?
Yeah, sorry, Counsel. Just give us a quick second. We're just pulling up.
Yeah, I didn't remember reading it.
Do you have any other questions while we wait for that, Counsel?
Yeah, because I'm just wondering, like, if it if it's less than what we currently now are estimating, whether or not we have, if the intention is do a second borrowing by law or because it says it comes to borrowing by law, but I'm just not sure through the borrowing, but I'm not sure if we have the room in there. I didn't see a reference to that in there.
So while we get that number, do you have another question?
I think that's it for now. I mean, I'll think of anything else. That's it.
Yeah, I can come back to you. So Mr. Fletcher, when you have the number, just throw your hand up. And but in the meantime, I'll go to Counsel Jolly.
Thank you.
Sorry, Counsel Jolly, I'm throwing my hand up.
Oh. Sorry, I meant your virtual hand, but no, that's good. Go ahead if you have the number.
Um, yeah, so I actually, I think it was addressed in the background. So we do have enough room within the existing borrowing by law to cover this increased amount. Or we've currently actually taken out a venture for two point six million on this project, and that was in relation to the land purchase. But we feel like within the twenty-five percent contingency that we originally built into the bylaw, there would be enough to cover this additional amount, but it does reduce the value of what's left kind of in that contingency. So there is a potential risk that the project, for this amount, we would have to potentially come back for a secondary borrowing by law.
Is there anything to add to that, Counsel? But more questions because of that?
I I do have a different separate question, actually, and it's relating to the Calgary modular one. My understanding is that they are dis- dismantling the Calgary station, and that there's been a lot of issues with their modular build. I'm just wondering if you're aware of that, or if you have any comments about that?
Yeah, I I'm not aware of that. I'll ask if either engineering, perhaps in the first instance, and then emergency services has all have any comments.
Thank you, Mr. Fletcher. I would have Meredith have an answer to that question. Meredith is online. She's the project manager for this project.
You. Senator, Counselor, I'm not aware of the process going on at the city of Calgary. Do you know they had planned to move that facility to new location? It was the first generation of the mine, and I know the manufacturer that is now on their third generation. So obviously, they have learned as time has gone by, but we're not aware of any issues that are happening down there.
Okay, I mean, I read in the paper that it was just, it was being completely put into storage and no longer being used. So I was wasn't sure if you were aware of that or not.
I was not.
Okay, thank you. That's it for now. Thank you.
All right, Counsel Jolly, you're up next.
Thank you. So, Mr. Fletcher, I gave you a heads up about my question. Right now, the only pros and cons we have in the backgrounder is cost. Do you have anything else to to add to that?
No, thank you very much. And obviously, I'll open the floor up to engineering and fire services as well. Bottom line, as you compare between the two, cost is really the determining factor in terms of the fulsome review against the the two methods of construction. Fundamentally, that's what we're talking about. They're very similar lifespan are similar before you're going to require a significant upgrade or or repair, maintain, replace funds. And from an operational perspective, there's no difference. And so I'll leave that general comment there. Administrative recommendation remains the modular build as it's more economical and provides the operational outputs necessary. But I'll ask Ms. Donnie George to comment from an engineering perspective with any additional context you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Fletcher. I think you covered the basis. Cost is the bigger differential, also schedule and build because the conventional will roughly take in comparison to the fire hall one that we have just completed about twelve months to eighteen months roughly. But modular, that's where we could save some time because it's pre-manufactured in a controlled environment. So that's where the cost savings come up as well in the on the labor side. And I would ask Meredith if she likes to add anything to the topic.
No, that that's pretty much, I mean, there are pros and cons to both types. And then this just seemed to fit within the the approved budget that we had.
Okay, anything for that, Counsel Jolly?
That's it. Thanks.
Okay, Counsel Kilik.
Uh, thank you. So just just to confirm that the previously approved uh, Boran by law in July of twenty twenty-one was twenty-six point five million. And I I believe I just heard that the increase to go from modular to conventional is is roughly three million, and that can still be accommodated within the previously approved budget. That's correct. Okay, good. The the other point is that this twenty-four, the total for the project, that's building, land, outfitting trucks, et cetera, that is already baked in in and included in our ten-year long-term debt strategy. Is that correct?
Through the chair to Counsel Kilik. That's correct. It's definitely been one that's sort of been on the books and been in consideration as we've been presenting different options for on the debt strategy.
Okay, so that that's good. It's already included in there, and that and that would be debt spread out. Okay, so that, that's good. It's already included in there. And that, and that would be debt spread out over twenty four, twenty five, twenty six.
Um, so typically, yes, we do tend to break up the borrowing basically to match the cash flows of the project. So as the project continues along and, and. You know, those costs are coming in, we look to spread it out over two to three debentures. We just have to make sure we have the cash, cash in hand when it's, when it's time to pay those invoices off on those projects.
And, and I should apologize because I can't see you and I hate when I can't see you, but if we fix this bench, we would have had, not had that problem, but. And, and the three million that. Would go from, from modular to conventional, again, our, our total debt over that period of time is like a hundred and twenty nine million dollars. In twenty twenty five and hundred and twenty two million in twenty twenty six. This extra three million is actually included in that, just to. Want to. Validate the, the scale of, of what we're talking about, three million in a total debt of a hundred and twenty nine million. In twenty twenty five.
Uh, that's correct. So the attachment that was provided on, on the debt includes all of our existing. Debts that we have and all the ones that have sort of our projects that are already pre approved that are in progress, or we still have debentures to take, but it's already accounting for all of those as well. And this, this proposed increase is included in those charts as well.
Okay, thank you. And. The, the risk of budget overruns was noted in the backrounder. But it was also noted that both of the modular. And conventional are still at, at class D, so that's. At concept stage, it's, it's still very early in the planning. So there's no difference between the, the risk level of, of how those. You know, what might happen to those budgets. They're, they're both stated as being at class D. Is, is that correct?
Um, I'd actually like to turn that one over to Donnie.
Through the chair to Counselor Killig, yeah, that's what, it's at concept level still. We still have to proceed into detailed design. So we consider that as at class D, about twenty to thirty percent contingency in there.
And, and what, what's the life expectancy of, of a fire hall? Is it? Twenty years, thirty years, forty years?
I would refer that question to Meredith. I think she has got some background based on the comparator that. Consultants have completed.
If you could just repeat that question, Counselor.
Just, I just wanted to get a sense of what the life expectancy of a fire hall is. Is it? A twenty year life that, that this building will be?
Generally, like just generally. Okay.
Yeah, generally.
Yeah, okay. Well. With. Proper maintenance of the facility, you know, buildings can last forever. We've got. Buildings in the Edmonton area that are over a hundred years old, so it, it's a hard. Information to say specifically X many years.
Yeah, okay.
But, and if I could, maybe Counselor just expand on that. I think, you know, part of the answer to your question is. You know, understanding you're looking at, at sort of the construction and, and the long term, I think it also delves into the previous motion as we look at, or. Sorry, the ensuing motion, as we look ultimately at our long term fire service planning, right? That will dictate our infrastructure needs and use. As we look at the expansion and evolution of St. Albert.
Yeah, yeah, perfect. But if, if we were to assume it was thirty years, three million over thirty years, that's. Hundred thousand dollars a year difference to, to the budget. So just, just trying to get, get, get a sense. Of. What this looks like. I, i- if I could. Take a moment to also address Counselor Hughes's question about the Walden Fire Station in Calgary. I've done my own research on that, and it was a modular station that was built in twenty twenty. And based on the City of Calgary budget. Document that was prepared for this year and their, their backrounder that was prepared. They are closing it and they are building a new station that will be a permanent build. And that will be starting this year and going into service in twenty twenty five. So it says to me that. You know, we could learn from that Calgary scenario where it's a modular was built and, and has only lasted them five years. And the quote out of the. Counsel briefing document, I'll just read the quote says, we can now take.
Sorry, Counselor Killig, is, I'm just keeping it open for questions right now. This sounds like great debate arguments, but. Are you turning this into a question? Are you just using this for your, your. Arguments in favor of your motion?
I, I was just trying to answer Counselor Hughes's question.
All right, let's do that during debate, because this is questions of our administration right now.
Okay, well, we. We can.
Don't worry, I'll get to you. You'll get your chance.
Yeah, okay.
All right, Counselor Broadhead.
Well, Counselor Killig would be interested in hearing your debate to be sure. So modular construction of twenty twenty four here in. Modular construction of the past or, it's, it's evolved, right? And, and in the backrounder, it talks about mobile and all of the rest. And when you start talking about mobile construction. And the ability to move buildings, you know, what comes to mind are trailer parks and trailers and atco trailers and. You know, those sorts of constructions that are intended to be very short lived and, and move from place to place. Is that the intent here? Are we going to be moving this building anytime soon or?
There, there are no plans right now to actually relocate the building. It, it is an option, I guess, as we look at sort of our long term planning. But no, there is no intention. This is not sort of the, the Fort McMurray temporary camp setup. This is along the lines of a. A purpose built modular home that the intention would be to have it sustainable over a longer term.
Yeah. So was that part of the consideration? And, and, don't get me wrong, I mean. A modular construction is used everywhere. I mean, they build bolt multi billion dollar ships using modular construction where in the past they didn't. But it seems to work better now. So, so my question is though, is that when you were, when the emergency services was thinking of this. Fire Hall Four. Did they say, well, you know, if we use modular construction, then the option of moving it in the. In the future exists where if it's stick build, that option doesn't exist. Is, was that a consideration?
Counselor, I'll, I'll actually ask Meredith perhaps to chime in and fire services can, but certainly based on the administrative discussions. As we initially looked at this, that was absolutely part of the calculus that went into the modular builds. You looked at the relative pros and cons was this option exist. A to build on relatively easy and, and B to potentially relocate it depending on how St. Albert grows and evolves. But Donnie Meredith, if you've got anything to add?
Through the chair to Counselor Broadhead, yes, that was certainly a consideration in the concept and discussion up, leading up to now. Providing that opportunity to move if required. So as part of the. Comparison that we have done modular versus conventional, that was looked into, future proofing and relocation was one of the criteria. That they have looked into and conventional construction is more permanent and would not be relocated easily. However, future proving, i.e. for. Expansion in the growth during design phase, we have to consider if there are any expansion required. Whereas for the modular, it could be easily expanded relatively easily and also can be relocated to a different site in the future. So that was a consideration. And I would, I would ask Meredith or Fire Services to add.
No, I, I think you got it done.
Yeah, well, so here's my question, Madam Mayor. So what are we, what are we buying for three million dollars here?
Yeah, thank you. I'll ask engineering again to weigh in on, because we're essentially talking about two different built forms. The difference in the three million dollars between the, the purpose built stick form and the, and the. Modular build, Donnie, if you could say, again, relative pros and cons, you're not buying any additional operational effectiveness. That's perhaps the one point I'll, I'll frame on. And then, Donnie, please go ahead.
Meredith, if you want to add to anything, please do so, but definitely it's the. I guess it's the. Mindset of people looking at modular versus. And regular construction, like you said, modular has evolved over time and it's kind of, you know, gone into that matching. With any conventional type of construction, the only difference is in the schedule that there, because it's in manufactured in a. Controlled environment, it could be, you know, less construction timeframe that's involved in, in making the product versus conventional, we have to. Hire a contractor. It's a sixteen to eighteen months process with all kinds of trades involved, whereas in the modular build. The traits are already. Trained and working towards the best product that's coming out of that shop line. So Meredith, if you want to add, what, what other differences? Have you seen to add to that three million?
Well, there could be some design differences in the modular. You're trying to maximize your space. Because. There are some limitations from a transportation perspective on how much of a big of a pod, for lack of a better term. You can put on the back of a trailer. So your, your design would be slightly, you'd design it a little differently. So that would play into material costs. And labor costs that would play in there.
So there's, there's pictures attached to the. To the agenda report, one, I take it is fire hall one and. And the second one is a modular build. Is, is that the one that was in Calgary? Or is that just a picture there of a modular build?
Uh, that's just a representative picture that we had off of one of the manufacturer's websites.
So are there, are there's. Buildings like this in, in service across Canada, across the United States, or are we bleeding edge here? Building fire halls modularly?
No, it has gained some traction. I'd have to look into providing locations of where it is elsewhere used, but it is other, other locations have used this type of building. There's a. There's a prefabricated, actually fire hall in Sturgeon County, excuse me. It's not a twenty four seven, so it doesn't have dorms, although that can be added. And that was done in twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen, so. There are different ways to build, building.
Right. All right, well, I'll certainly await your closing comments, Counselor Killig. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, sorry, but that, thanks, Wes. Counselor Bremensky.
Thank you for administration through the mayor. I just have one question regarding the contingency fund that you've set aside for this development and. If you're comparing modular to the standard build, is there a greater guarantee of a modular staying on budget? Then, you know, the overruns that you could, you know, encounter with trades and production and, and product. Is there more of a guarantee on that original price of a modular build?
Yeah, thank you, Counselor. Again, I will defer over to engineering, probably, Donnie, if you want to push this to Meredith as the project manager. Thanks.
Sure, Meredith can definitely add. Through the Chair to Counselor Bremensky, there's a higher chance of staying within the current budget. Again, we haven't done, gone through the design phase of either one, so that's still. An exercise that we have for twenty twenty four, and then that will dictate us in terms of what cost and schedule that we are looking, again, the type of. But method of, methodology of executing the construction, we are even thinking through that, right? So there is different methods that we can employ. Design bit built, and the second methodology that we have employed on our Sturgeon Reserve is the IPD model. The more we think about the complexities of bringing all the trades and whatnot. We are kind of leaning towards an IPD model, but we have to flush through that in terms of what methodology do we apply? So all of that. Considered will definitely help us towards staying within the budget. Higher chance of staying, I guess, with the current approved budget. If we don't, if we approve the extra, then we can look at the conventional as well.
Thank you. And the other question I have is, we're, you know, the focus is building for different environmental conditions, you know, that. That some are thinking may come to be and. It's, it's my understanding that the modular is, is, you know, designed for different, you know. To, to stand the test, so to speak, is, was there any research done on one versus the other in that respect?
I would defer that, for that question to Meredith, that the consultant who have looked at the comparator, you know, would have looked at it as well.
And they understand up well then?
Before Meredith, you start, we have one minute to the public hearing, so I'll let you answer this question and then we're going to pause all debate and conversation on this. And go quickly over to the first public hearing of the year. So go ahead, Meredith, and then we'll come back to this later.
Thank you, Eric. We, we did look at multiple considerations when we were looking at this quality control was, was one of them. Building construction. I mean, building codes are building codes. There are some. I guess differences with the modular, because it is movable, it is covered by simply different codes. But that doesn't mean that we can't build it to whatever codes we deem to be most appropriate.
Thank you. That's all my questions.
Well, that was good timing then. Okay, so we'll take a pause here, guys, and I'm going to officially call. The public hearing for by law one, two thousand and twenty four, which is a land use by law text amendment. To add health services to business court transition, hoping to all three readings today. So officially open the public hearing and I'll go. Well, I've done this before and this is a simple one. I don't have my cheat sheet of. Of comments, but we'll open it up to administration to give a presentation. Then I will allow counsel to ask questions and then we'll go to any registered speakers and we do have one. I think just answer questions, but I will, I'll give them the opportunity and then I will. Ask for somebody to make a motion to close the public hearing and we'll go to all the readings. So. I've got. So she had here was our presenter and he online or in chambers?
He's in chambers, Mayor, and. It's gonna, sorry, I'm just turning my camera on. He's just going to log into the Zoom meeting so he can share his screen. So we'll just need a minute here.
Okay, no problem. Take a pause. While we're waiting for that, is Constance on, on the Zoom call or is she in chambers?
Constance, Madam Mayor, Constance is in chambers here today.
Awesome. Okay, perfect. Thank you for that mic.
Mayor, can I ask you a quick question? What's your target time to get, catch that plane, I guess? Because I know we're trying to be efficient, but I'm just like, I don't know what our target time is. I don't know when your plane leaves, I guess.
I think we've got, we've got, we're, I think we have an hour and a half yet.
Okay, good.
Thanks.
So that I don't panic or anything for you.
Whenever planning is ready, they can just start with their presentation.
They're just finalizing, calling things up. Thanks. Sorry, Your Worship, I think we're just getting the, there we go. In this here, okay.
Okay, go ahead. Seems like we lost it.
I'm still here, Your Worship, Sean's on and up, so it should get sorted out very quickly.
Now I see it. Now I see it.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, sorry for the delay. Uh, good afternoon, everybody. Uh, I am Sajid Safat here with uh, Planning and Development uh, to present to you uh, by law one, twenty twenty-four regarding a uh, land use by law text amendment to the Business Park Transition District in the land use by law. Uh, Kevin Maloney, on behalf of the property owner, is the applicant for this uh, land use by law text amendment application. This land use by law amendment applies to properties districted Business Park Transition, uh, also known as BPT. In the land use by law, there are four properties in the city that are districted uh, BPT. These properties are located in the southern portion of the Campbell Business Park North, as shown uh, on the map to the right. The subject properties are developed with existing buildings. No physical changes to the exterior of the buildings or or properties is anticipated through this application process. This application proposes a text amendment to the L U B um, for the Business Park Transition District. The proposed amendment is to add the health service use to the list of permitted uses in this district. The proposed amendment will enable the health service use to all properties districted BPT and provide for consistency in enabling the health service use between districts in the Campbell Business Park. In addition to the health service use being enabled by the land use by law, a development permit and building permit is required to operate the health service use. No notification letters to residents were provided or onsite signage required uh, as this amendment is not specific to a property. This application was circulated uh, internally, there were no objections to this proposal. In conclusion, the proposed uh, L U B text amendment is supported by both the area structure plan and the municipal development plan. As such, administration recommends approval of the proposed uh, L U B text amendment as presented today. Thank you, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Awesome, um, I'll open up for questions, but a quick thank you to administration, this seemed like a pretty straightforward, easy one, and appreciate how fast it got this all agenda, so any questions of administration? Seeing none, I'm gonna actually um, then go to the public, and so the one registered speaker is Constance really from ISL, Constance, if you can hear me, do you have um, anything to add, or you're just here to answer questions? Maybe just come down to the mic?
Hello, Madam Mayor, members of council, we do have a brief presentation. Um, so we would like to give that, and in addition, joining me today are my clients, doctors Alkisam and Maloney, if there are questions of them.
Okay, thank you. All right, go ahead with your presentation.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, members of council, we're here to speak in support of bylaw one, twenty twenty-four on behalf of doctors Kevin Maloney and Mo Alkisam of seven, three, two, six, four, eight Alberta Limited, the owners of units ten and twenty at ten Carlton Drive, which is one of the four properties districted BPT in the Campbell Business Park. You would have seen number ten on the aerial figure two that was just presented by administration. My clients applied for this text amendment to bylaw nine, two thousand and five, proposing that health service be added as a permitted use within the BPT district. The need for this amendment arose when my clients found out after purchasing their Carlton Drive property in twenty twenty-three that they could not relocate their business and operate their use because it is defined as a health service use and not currently listed in the BPT district. We understand that if passed today, bylaw one, twenty twenty-four will add health service as a permitted use within the BPT district, enabling my clients to then obtain the development permit and building permit that they require to operate their chiropractic health service use. So today, we're asking for council support to give the bylaw all three readings for the following reasons. The proposed text amendment is consistent with the Campbell Business Park North Area Structure Plan and the city's municipal development plan. The proposed amendment will enable the properties districted BPT to operate health services as a permitted use. My clients, doctors Maloney and Alkisam have provided their chiropractic services in St. Albert now for twenty-seven years and nineteen years respectively. They have an established local client base and wish certainty to transition to their, their operation to the newly renovated space at their Carlton Drive property. Their hope is to minimize any delays in providing their service to their clients. Council approval of bylaw one, twenty twenty-four today will provide that certainty and enable them to obtain the permit approvals they require. My client's chiropractic service use is similar and compatible with existing physiotherapy, chiropractic, ophthalmologist, and dental health service uses in the BPT district located directly north across Carlton Drive from my client's property and chiropractic, psychology, and massage therapy uses in the CIS district to the south in Campbell Business Park. As such, the proposed amendment to permit health service use within the BPT district provides consistency of health service use across all three districts in Campbell Business Park. My clients have had to delay the relocation of their chiropractic business by several months because the current BPT district did not allow health service. This has caused some financial strain. For my clients, any further delay will exacerbate that strain. Approval of bylaw one, twenty twenty-four today will provide the certainty and enable my clients to take the next steps they require to transition their chiropractic practice to Campbell Business Park. I just want to take a moment as well, and bringing this bylaw forward today, a special thanks to administration for advancing it to be dealt with by council today. We're available for questions, and thank you, council, for your time.
Thank you very much for that. Um, I'll open up for questions, but uh, maybe I'll save some of my comments when we actually get to debate. But I'll open up for questions now, is there any questions of our proponents? Or their representative? Seeing none, um, any questions back to administration? Right, I'm gonna ask for a motion to close the public hearing. Counsel Hughes, I think I saw your hand wave, go ahead.
Helps if I unmute, that the public hearing on bylaw one slash twenty twenty-four be closed.
Thank you for that. Call for the vote. That is carried unanimously. Um, do you mind if I I'll get a breach, um, tick down there, yes, because this is gonna be a lot of back and forth. Now I'm looking for someone to do first reading.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That bylaw one slash twenty twenty-four be an amendment two hundred and eighteen to bylaw nine slash two hundred and five, two thousand and five, pardon me, be read a first time.
Thank you for that. Any comments?
I'm, Madam Mayor, glad that uh, this is before us today and um, make a uh, opportunity for a business to be viable in Campbell. So, thank you.
See no more hands up, call for the vote. Counsel Jai, you just took your thing down, but I assume you're in favor. Okay, all right. That is uh, unanimous, okay, that's all lower our yeses. Uh, Counsel Broadhead, I'll go to you to do second reading.
That bylaw one slash twenty twenty-four be read a second time.
Anything further?
Nothing further, Madam Mayor.
All right, call for the vote. That is unanimous, okay, tip your hands down, and one last time, Counsel Broadhead, oh no, I need unanimous consent, who wants to do that one? Counselor Bremanski, thank you for that.
That unanimous consent be given for consideration of third reading of bylaw one slash twenty twenty-four.
The votes? Okay, that is unanimous, so Counsel Broadhead, third reading.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor, it's my pleasure to move that bylaw one slash twenty twenty-four be read a third time.
Um, before we go to the vote, I just wanna say, let's not just thank you to administration, but maybe an apology to our proponents for this, I wouldn't call it an error, maybe an overlook. Makes total sense, and I think we should apologize just for the delay that you've had to base, and um, we look forward to seeing your business not be successful or continue to be successful. All right, call for the vote. That is carried, so that item is done, we have changed the land use by law to allow for the health services, congratulations, everyone. And now we're gonna flip back to Counselor Killick's motion on the fire hall. And I will ask if there's any more questions that I got on my case. Uh, is there any more questions uh, regarding Counsel Killick's notice of motion? All right, I see no more hands up. I will, uh, Counsel Killick, Counsel Jai, your, your yeses are still up. Uh, Counsel Killick, let you start the debate.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, yeah, on uh, just a couple of things to, as I said, to answer uh, Counsel Hughes's question about um, uh, Walden Calgary modular uh, fire station that was built in twenty twenty and is now being de-commissioned. Um, they're closing it, and they're building a new permanent uh, station in in uh, roughly the same location, um, which will be uh, opened in uh, twenty twenty-five. And as I mentioned, in the City of Calgary Council briefing package says we, we can take, now take the time to plan and build a permanent station. And um, the other thing that they also note is that the uh, temporary station is going to go in storage, and that's another direct quote out of their budget or their council briefing package. So they're actually don't have a reuse for it at this current stage. And I think we can learn from uh, that scenario uh, to say, if we have the time, which we do, to plan a permanent station, uh, that's the, the uh, direction we should go as opposed to a, a modular station. And also in some research that I did, uh, I believe Counselor Bremanski asked about, or or Counselor Broadhead asked about other locations. Man, it's interesting that uh, Winnipeg uh, is building a uh, station called Waverley West. And it kind of plays into two questions that were asked here. Number one, the cost, I think Counselor Bremanski asked about cost. Their, their cost increase on that particular modular built station has gone up from when they originally estimated it. It's gone up from four point two million, it's gone up an additional two point seven million to six point nine, so that's a seventy percent increase in cost on uh, on a modular uh, station that's currently being built out in Winnipeg. The uh, again, a quote um, from the Winnipeg uh, City Council is, this modular temporary station, until we are, we are building this, until we are able to build a permanent station. So here we have two scenarios where a modular station is actually being taken out of commission and then spending more money to build a permanent uh, station, and I, I think we can learn from uh, from that and say, we, we don't need to do that type of uh, uh, scenario, we can build a permanent station. Um, and uh, ha- have it done with the traditional uh, construction uh, methodologies. So that is, is uh, available to us within the budget, that extra three million dollars in, in price uh, is uh, contained within the budget, so this is not a um, an increase to a budget, is, it is just saying we're gonna allocate, from within the budget, we're going to reallocate an additional three, three million dollars. Um, the, the other comments, I guess, is that, you know, when we've looked at at other projects that we've just recently approved, Millennium Park, um, you know, has a structure in it, it, it's not being contemplated to be a, a modular structure in, in that sixteen million dollar project. Same thing, there's, there's no modular discussions uh, around our new municipal transit garage at five point six million. There's no modular discussions, they're all traditional uh, build for fleet garage expansion at four point one million, so we and I fully support those projects, that, they are the right way to go. And likewise, I think a um, permanent uh, structure uh, on traditional uh, construction methods is the right way to go for the, for the uh, police or for the fire uh, station. Um, when we, when we looked at it, it, the, the document background was apples to apples comparison. So, but these, these other stations are, are built on a on a uh, modular basis with a primary reason that they are going to move. They're gonna take it down and move it somewhere else, but in, in St. Albert's case, we have a permanent location for our fire station, it is the transportation uh, area, it is, there's no intention of, of moving it. Um, it, that is where it's going to go, and it's going to stay there for the next twenty to thirty, or maybe even longer years. Um, there was a comment about, there might be some cost savings because a, a modular build, you know, when you hire a contractor uh, versus hiring the contractors to, to build a permanent uh, traditional build. But from a, a St. Albert perspective, we hire a contractor to do all that work, we don't hire plumbers and electricians and eating, you know, people, there, we don't hire them, I, we hire a contractor to build the fire station, and the fires, that contractor hires the the uh, electricians and plumbers and whatever else. Um, that's the same as in, in a modular scenario, we, we buy a modular building, we hire hire one person, one modular company, and they, they go out and hire the subtrades, so there's, there's really um, not a, a huge amount of difference in terms of what we're, we're looking at. My, my understanding from the backgrounder as well is that we can build, we have the time uh, to build a conventional build uh, building for the firefighters. Uh, and, and uh, it's going to be in, in that permanent location. And we have the time to do it right. And uh, it's, it's only a small amount of money to uh, to make that change. I guess the other thing is that I was thinking about when we talked about our, our council office. That um, when we're, we're building our council offices for when we go full time uh, in a couple of years, uh, we, we will be working out of those offices, eight hours a day, five days a week, maybe two hundred and fifty days a year max. Um, but we wouldn't be happy working out of a modular type office. We, we want traditional standard office space, and that's what we're looking at. So when I think of our fire medic staff that work out of this building twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. And I look at the service that they provide to our community. Who do we call when there's a car accident? Who do we call when somebody slips and falls? Who do we, who do we call when um, you know, our grandparents might have a heart attack or, or something like that? The, these are the people we call. These are the people we call, our fire and medic response, not just fire, but the medic side of it as well. The service they provide to our community is to earn them. Earn them the right to have the best facility we can provide. I hope council supports the additional $3 million to move this from a modular type building to a permanent type building. Thank you.
Thanks, Councillor Killick. Go ahead, Councillor Jolly.
Thank you. I really struggled preparing for this debate because I have no expertise in building. You know, I think of Donnie's team, you know, there are decades of experience building kind of the run a municipality, and that's not something I have, and that's not something that I can get from, you know, Googling. And so as I was reflecting, it really reminded me of a discussion that council had with our strat planning advisor last term, where they talked about kind of the governance and administration roles. And this, to me, is so far into administration that I struggle to see why we're having this discussion. For me, it's not so much about the cost. If the cost, you know, that extra $3 million was going to give us a product that was stronger, that's a completely different discussion, but we've heard repeatedly that that extra $3 million is not going to give us something different. There's this idea that modular means temporary. And I'm not sure exactly where that kind of misinformation comes from. Modular is a, it's a building methodology that's actually changed a lot in the last 20 years. I don't get any sense that we plan to build a temporary building in the same way that, you know, you can buy absolutely beautiful modular homes that are assembled on site. We're just getting the savings from building those modular pieces indoors. So you don't have to deal with them, you know, your guys can't work in minus 40. So I really want to emphasize that I'm not saying that I want a temporary building. I'm saying that I want a permanent building, and I want to direct administration to do that, you know, as they see fit. I think there's also an idea that best means, you know, conventional. And I don't agree with that. I think we can absolutely have a beautiful modular building. I've actually been researching modular homes, and there are some absolutely stunning products out there. So I have every confidence that with any bill that administration chooses, they'll build us a fantastic facility that is a wonderful place to work in. You know, council does not have any offices planned for next term, but if we did, I'd be certainly happy to work in a modular build. I think it's a great new technology, and I have no concerns with it, you know, as a layperson. So because of those reasons, I can't support this motion. Thank you.
Councillor Broadhead and then Councillor Hughes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, you've certainly brought forward a motion, Councillor Killick, that causes us to think deeply. I don't think we have this discussion 15 years from now. So I'm struggling with, oh, I'm going to vote on this because I do want our firefighters to be given the very best of things in order to do the job that is difficult at the best of times. And we honor them by giving them a good place to work from. So however, I certainly don't want to hear that we're giving less than what we could. Troubling to me is the idea that we would put in a fire station and then contemplate moving it. And hence my question about whether or not that was part of the original planning rubric, if you will, about making a decision. I don't ever see this thing moving, quite honestly. So those are my struggles here. I, there's a delta between what we could get this for and what we want to provide. So in any case, those are my thoughts. And when I hear everybody speak, then I'll vote, just so you know. Thanks.
Thanks, Councillor Broadhead, Councillor Hughes.
Thank you. So I'm going to be voting in favor of this. I have some concerns. I understand the embracing of modular homes, but I don't necessarily know if it has this durability in this type of build, at least not yet. And I think back just to the electric buses, and we were assured that they would make it for 20 years. We were sure that batteries would make it 18. Those estimates have been dramatically revised already. And I'm not sure if, on second thought, if we'd have that information and learned what we had at that time, if we would have actually gone down that road at that time and not waited to see if the technology had improved further before we would consider putting that kind of an investment in. So when I look at this, though, and to Councillor Broadhead, this is what I look at for the risk versus reward, is that if, let's just say that the modular would have been the same, we would have spent $3 million more and have it stick and build, stick build, right? And brick build. And the stick and brick build, we know will make it the 50 years. But if we do the modular and we find out in four or five years' time that it's not working out, it's going to cost us $16 million to correct it and plus inflation. So we're really risking not just $3 million, we're risking the cost of this build because if it doesn't work out, it's a completely new build, plus the cost of inflation to correct it. So to me, this is actually, it's a bit of a risky decision to move forward on a modular, especially when we learn that Calgary has put one up and in very short order taken it down, have no intention of using it in another location, and has put it into storage. And I got this information from the email that was sent to council just last week. And it shows it from the Engage Calgary that it says it's being taken down. There's another one going on the same location, and it's going into storage. So the idea of moving it somewhere else is not even being discussed right now. And I'm not sure if the city of Calgary would have moved down this road to do this had they known that they would be building a permanent one just years later. And we don't have the same budgets Edmonton and Calgary to be able to just throw away $10 million and say, okay, that was a learning lesson. So that is why, if I look at this just from a risk perspective, it's less risky to go with what we know and spend $3 million than to hope that $16 million is the right way to go long-term. And my suspicion is that even if it does work out for five or how many years, I think that it will probably need to be replaced prior to the same long-term plan that it would have been first stick and brick build. So that is my concern right now, is that's when I look at that, that's where I'm going to go with it, is to go with what I know, because I know that that investment will pay off in dividends, and the modular may work out. I just don't want to take that risk right now. Thank you.
Okay, Councillor Bromanski's next.
Thank you. And I'd like to say that I agree with, you know, comments from virtually all the councillors here today. And the struggle that I have is the same. You know, I trust administration. I don't see anything that's ever been built in St. Albert or designed in St. Albert that was something that wasn't a nice, you know, a nice place for an employee or for anyone to be in. And I would also find it surprising that administration would ask for less than they need to do the best job for a design or a development in this city. So in this particular case, I'm not sure that just, you know, deciding a particular dollar amount will change the quality or the future of the usage of the fire station. And again, I'm just going back to just staying out of administration's way and trusting that they're going to get it right, no matter what they do at the end of the project. So I won't support this one. Thank you.
Great. I think that's all the hands up I see. I'll just add my two cents. First of all, I think we should be, quite honestly, thanking administration for trying to save us some money. That's what we ask them to do all the time. And doing the work and the investigation and coming to the conclusion that modular is a good option is on the scene, Mr. Fletcher, to be commended that you guys went that way and were willing to take on something non-traditional. Right? Quite often, traditional is a scary word, and keep doing these things the same way. We're never going to be innovative. We're never going to save money. We're never going to think outside the box. And the glory of relationships I've built over the last couple of years has allowed me to text Peter Demong, who is the board councillor in Calgary that built the modular fire hall. I just asked him a simple question. Is your modular fire hall still working? He got back to me right away and said, yes, it is. But looking back, we might choose to make it a little larger. The fire part is claimed to be a little squeezed in. But other than that, it's working well. I will point out, it was always meant to be temporary because they had time constraints and site constraints. But they're taking it down not because it's not working. It's because this was always in the plan, and their plan is to use that fire hall in another spot if need be. So I'm going to have to err on the side of saving money, even though it's in the boring bylaw, just because it is contingency. We were told at the beginning that we might even have to then go into that contingency, come back to council for more money if there's any other cost overruns. But just because it's in there doesn't mean we should spend it. And I'm going to go with the $3 million savings today. So, Councillor Killick, it goes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I too don't have building expertise. And I tried to stay out of getting too deep into trying to understand modular versus conventional construction. I believe, looking at a budget and trying to focus in on the dollars, $3 million is truly a role of council. It's governance and admin role. So that's where I try to stay focused. And I think we do have, as mentioned and stated, that the money is there. It's within the budget. It's within the long-term borrowing bylaw. And we have the ability to use that money to give our fire and medic team the best building possible. We have the time to do it, and we can learn from some of the other municipalities, Calgary and Winnipeg are the examples, Winnipeg being way over budget, and Calgary decommissioning theirs. And even whether it's in a long-term plan or not, they are still changing. They're still decommissioning that building after five years and going to go with a more conventional build. So I think we can learn from our other municipalities. And as I mentioned, $3 million over the lifetime of this building is hardly noticeable in any of our budgets over, you know, 30 years lifespan of that building. I think it's a good investment. Let's get it right the first time. Let's build a building that we're going to be proud of and that is going to provide the best level of services to our fire and medic folks that basically live there. They, as I said, operate 24/7, 365 days a year. So I hope council supports spending this additional $3 million, which, as I said, is already within budget. So I'll leave it at that and hope that we get support for this.
All right, I will call the vote. Okay, so I've got Councillor Bromanski, Mayor Herron, Councillor Jolly. I don't know your, I need your vote, Councillor. Okay. Okay, opposed, and Councillor Hughes, Broadhead, Killick, and Kai Faber. So that passes. All right, we are now on to Councillor Hughes's motion. Does anyone need a quick break? Why don't we take a minute? Ken, you said your internet was spotty. If you want to move, this is a good chance, but let's keep it quick. It's 2:39. We'll be back in our chairs by quarter to.
Whoever's controlling the room, I'm going to jump out and jump back in.
Whoever's controlling the room, I'm gonna jump out and jump back in. I'm here just having computer issues, so switch some things around.
All right. Councilor Kilik, Broadhead and Ramensky, still have your last vote up. And I'm going now to twelve point three, which is Councilor Hughes's motion on a long-term plan for fire service. I'll get you to read it in.
Sure, I have some questions as well about it, Mayor. Yep, the city create for councils review and approval, a long-term plan for fire services by Q three of twenty twenty-four. And actually, can we, I'll change it to Q four twenty twenty-four. I didn't have any feedback here on the timeline, but I'll just change it upfront to Q four twenty twenty-four.
You had questions?
Yeah, I had a couple of questions.
Yeah, go ahead.
So for the, the plan for twenty nineteen that came through, was that done in-house or was that contracted out?
I'm afraid I don't know. I know we've got Daria Slowkar and perhaps she's got some context. We also have Lisa Wiki from Fire Services, so I'll defer to both of them.
Sorry, I guess from Fire Services, I don't have an answer on, on your question related to twenty nineteen. That would be something I'd have to get back to you at this time.
Yeah, it was, it was a combination of internal and consultant that was hired. It was using the old framework that we don't have in place anymore. As you know, we moved away from program-specific strategies into more of strategies that align to MDP, which are program and outcome based.
So the other question I have, so the overtime that was listed in the background, or is that typical for twenty twenty-two or previous years? Because we only had it for twenty twenty-three. Is, is that consistent or is overtime gone up or down on annual basis between the two, between, like between twenty twenty-three and previous years?
I'll ask Lee to comment. Thanks.
Sorry, Councilor Hughes, again, I don't have that information in front of me from previous years. I only have twenty twenty-three's overtime dollars in front of me that were, were given to me from Chief Cook. So again, that's something I would have to go back and get that information for you. Sorry.
Okay. Just out of curiosity, how many aerial fire trucks do we have right now in service? If there was a fire, how many do we have available right now?
Currently, the city has owns one aerial device for the fire service in St. Albert.
Is that one on the road right now?
Yes, it is.
Okay. I thought we had two.
No, as far as I am under the understanding, I've only seen one. I know it was down for a little bit, but it has been returned and back in service. We do have agreements with the City of Edmonton if we require extra aerial devices.
Okay, let me tell you why I'm confused because we had one and then we bought another one.
That is my exact understanding, Councilor Hughes. Yeah.
And so then, and then there, there was an intention to sell this, the first one, and then there was a motion that passed to not sell the first one. So we would still have two. But we only have one now?
I've only seen one. I guess if there's one not in service, that's something that I have to go back and take a look at. Sorry, sorry. If I'm under the understanding correctly, the, the previous aerial ladder that we had here was an articulating aerial ladder and from my understanding, it was sold.
When was it sold?
That I'm not one hundred percent sure. I'd have to look into that.
Okay. I'm just curious why it was sold when there was a council motion to not sell it.
I think that was prior to this current administration.
Yeah, the motion is still valid, though. I would, I would love to understand.
Why don't we follow up on that step for Council?
Yeah, not now, but later. I would like an explanation how we sold it with a council motion does not sell it.
We'll, we'll clarify the situation and come back to council with, with the.
That would be awesome. Looking forward to that. I had one more question. So when I look at the fire services plan that was in place until twenty twenty-three, there were goals and objectives listed within the plan. If this was not to pass and it was to come forward in sometime in twenty twenty-six or later, do we have any goals that are currently not in a formal plan that we are working on that there will be an intention to share with council?
So maybe I can speak to that. So for now, the plan that was shared with council is what's being implemented. And from talking to Fire Services team, there are still some activities that need to be implemented. In the meantime, we are starting department plan with Fire Services Emergency Department, actually. So they will have new up-to-date goals and activities that would be implemented in over the next three years. So as we initiate development of that department plan, I think that Everett can certainly keep council up to date on its progress and share information as it's developed. But by the end of the year, I think, or early next year, they should be able to have a new emergency services plan. The challenge is that we have to prioritize as things are happening in the community. So according to current schedule, we should have a department plan by the end of this year.
Okay, so wouldn't that be a fire services plan then?
It would be, yes, it would be emergency services department plan. So it wouldn't be just for fire. It would include policing and fire services. And it would be more of a three-year plan. And then as we get into development of a community well-being, that's more longer term. It's a ten-year plan with five-year implementation plan. But to answer your question, department plan will give you more of that next three-year, three to four-year plan for department as a whole.
Okay, so what I'm looking for, the motion that was given as an alternate was just to do it part of the, develop the twenty twenty-six community well-being plan. And so I guess if we, if I were to pass this motion, if the motion were to go as stated, would it be interpreted to be part of the department plan? Because I just want a plan. I want us to actually have it articulated and share it with council. So whether it's a plan within something by the end of the year, saying it's part of the department, here's your fire services division, or it's a standalone document, to me, that's not the important part. So I guess I'm just asking, when we look at the wording of the motion, do I need to change it to say? I can, I can say a long-term plan for fire services within the department. Would that work?
We would, we would, like, if you look at the under background, we mentioned development of a department plan. So internally, we would interpret this motion as a strategy. So strategy for fire services to be part of community well-being. We would still proceed with the department plan and can provide that information to council.
I, I think, your question, there's some semantics at play specifically. A long-term plan is not the department plan. The department plan is really sort of that three-year, short to medium-term goals component of it. A long-term plan from administrator's perspective is that ten-year outlook that is the community well-being plan. And so you know, under the current language to direct us to conduct a long-term plan, we would be looking at trying to put together a ten-year plan in the next year as opposed to the department plan that is really that three to five-year outlook that bridges to the long-term component of it. And so I understand that, that, you know, perhaps isn't sort of neat and tidy, but you know, there's the, the short-term goals and then there's the long-term outlook for the evolution and the growth of fire services to meet the needs of the community. And that's what the, the community well-being plan is.
Okay, so let me tell you what I'm trying to intend and you can tell me if we need to change the wording. What I, the previous long-term plan was a, was a four-year plan. So asking for another four-year plan to me was still consistent with what we did before. We had a fire services long-term plan, went twenty nineteen, twenty twenty-three. I'm looking for again, another one. Doesn't have to be going to twenty sixty-five. I'm looking for one that fills in the gap now and that also will address anything for future and will address has specific goals and and trying to solve just various issues that we have. For example, the overtime issues or just managing all of our assets. That's what I'm looking for. So what would be the wordage that would accomplish that goal so that you guys can meet that end goal?
You can comment perhaps on the, on the scope of the plan, but that's, that's actually going to happen already with the department plan for the scope of this year.
That's a department plan. So emergency services department plan.
So we don't need a motion to get that done. You're doing that this year. So it's not about changing.
That will achieve, I believe, what, what Counselor Hughes articulated, what she's looking for, which is we're not flying by the seat of our pants. There's a plan over the course of three years, right, to ensure that we tackle some of the challenges and, and, and evolve responsibly. That is the department plan for that three-year piece. And then that will bleed into the long-term plan as we define it, which is that ten-year outlook, which is the community well-being plan.
Okay. And does that plan intend to have goals like what was stated in the twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-three plan? Is there an intention to have that type of thing where we say, here's some of the concerns or improvements that we plan to do and how we plan to achieve them? Is that going to also be in there or not? Do you know, I'm looking at you right now, Daria. I said, no, you're probably leaving some of this.
In the department plan? Yes, that's the intention. The intention is to identify any challenges, obstacles, problems that, you know, we're facing. And then to work through more, more detailed environmental scan to understand what else may be coming our way related to fire and policing services. And then work through identifying specific strategies and then activities to help us address that over the next number of years. It could also deal with resourcing requirement, what it, and you know, any operating requests or capital request. What it will not address is any detailed resourcing model. So you will not find detailed assessment of resources or anything like that, but it will speak to maybe something like that being required or undertaken as part of the implementation of department plan.
Okay. And the intention is to bring that before council at the end of this year?
Typically, department plans, we do not share with a public in council, but I will leave it to Bill to guide us through that. Every department has a department plan. And when we share budget information, they share some of that information with council. But for this one, I'll leave it to Bill if you can.
Yeah, I, I certainly think we could share it with council. I don't know if it would be a briefing necessarily, perhaps a slot memo sufficient, but if there's interest in council and seeing it, I don't see any reason why we wouldn't provide an overview.
Okay, because I'm willing to withdraw this, Mayor, but I just wanted to make sure that we actually do see it. The previous plan was public and it was brought before council. So I just want to make, you know, close this loop and make sure that we do have this as long as possible because right now we are going without a formal plan. We're still in development. So you know what? I'll just withdraw it, Mayor.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
And I will make a note to make sure that we, we share once it's developed.
Thank you. I know you're good for it, Daria. Thank you for that.
Councilor Kilik, can I get you to take down your guess from the last motion? All right, so Mr. John. All right. We have a few, or it's information, request notice motion announcements time. I think nothing has been sent in since the whole last week. Does anyone have any IRS or notice motion similar to what we did today? Okay. Let's go into fourteen point one, which is in camera. So I need a council to make a motion on that one. Go ahead, Councilor Kilik. Thank you for that.
That council move in camera to discuss a matter pursuant to section twenty-five, one C of the Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act.
Awesome. Okay, before I call for the votes in camera, we'll need to have your video on and looking at all the in-camera stuff. I don't see any motions coming back in public. So I was gonna suggest, Sean, that you gave me the host responsibilities, but just in case I can't finish the meeting and I have to pass the chair over to Councilor Hughes, the deputy mayor, might not work. So can you maybe pass the hostess, one other councilor, maybe Councilor Hughes or Broadhead or somebody?
Yeah, that sounds good. Ready the room and then invite you in.
Okay, thanks. So call for the vote on the camera motion then. So I think that is unanimous. Okay, we're going camera and everyone just needs to wait for your invite to the breakout room.
Sounds good. Yeah. Stay tuned. Yeah.